Good evening, the May 9th Board Meeting is now in order. I'm happy to welcome my fellow Board members and the public. I'd like to take the opportunity to remind the public that the appropriate place for participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified in the agenda. Outside your individual public comment opportunity, your role in this meeting is an observer. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite the audience to join. At this time, I'd like to offer my fellow Board members and Ms. Hand the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. We'll go with the West Shore teams in a second here. Ms. Jenkins, do you want to lead?
Is there like an order or no?
No, we're just going to wait to do the big recognitions until after everybody's got their chance. Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I have one of them. Okay, you see you in a bit. I'll go, I'll go. I don't have one of the big ones. All right, so, a couple of Saturdays ago, I was able to go to the BEMDA Gala, which stands for Brevard Indian Medical Doctors Association, and accept on behalf of Brevard Schools Foundation, a $25,000 check for a new scholarship that they are sponsoring. You know, when we do our spring senior scholarships, so really excited to see that for students who are going to be going into the medical field. And so I wanted to thank BEMDA, one, for hosting me at the dinner, and then for their very generous gifting of that new endowed scholarship, so that was very exciting. Last Thursday was the National Day of Prayer, and I just want to thank all the people who joined at all the mini gatherings, I can't remember how many there were, they're over 40 across the county, because one of the things that they specifically pray for whenever they meet is for our schools, and I very much appreciate all the prayers anytime that are lifted up, but especially on that day. Friday was School Lunch Hero Day, and we got to get out there and have a little fun, serving some lunch, wearing the hairnets, I hope you wear your hairnet, Mr. Trent, and getting to see the great work that our heroes in our cafeterias do. But I was able to go to Bayside for breakfast and Jupiter for lunch, but I have to tell you, when I took a little break, when we had a lull in the line, which we didn't have many of those, and went out to a table full of second graders, and second graders are my favorite. And I just knew, after they started talking to me, I said, "What grade are you guys in?" And they said, "Second." I'm like, "I knew it." I just had to share with you some of the rave reviews for our school cafeterias. Jamison said, "It's the best." Angelo said, "Cool." Kelly just gave me two thumbs up. Kaimani said, "10 out of 10, and they have the best staff." What second grader uses the word "staff"? I was so impressed. Micah said, "Super awesome." Bailey said, "I like all the staff here." Jamar said, "It's the best cafeteria ever." And Isaac said, "1,000 out of 100." So thank you to all of our cafeteria staff, and thank you Board for going along with the challenge and getting out there and meeting some of our superheroes in our schools.
I'll go next. Since we're on the school cafeteria, I too got the opportunity to go and serve in one of the school cafeterias in my district, and I had the opportunity to serve at Challenger 7, and the staff at that school and the cafeteria, I was blown away, the fact that they remember all these kids' names. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." I actually worked the hotline next to Ms. Veronica, burned my hand on pulling something out, just a little bit, not too bad, that wasn't anything bad, but I just have a little mark. I just, they were amazing, honestly. The amount of students that they come through, and as fast as she was, I honestly felt like I was hindering her being next to her, but she was so cheerful. Her contagious joy was just something that I think the students picked up on, and they were excited to go in there and see her, and so to the Challenger 7 crew there, thank you guys so, so much. I had the opportunity to do a couple of fun things in the last couple of weeks. So, the city of Titusville put on an award ceremony where they recognized all the schools in the north end. Some of our staff here got the opportunity to go with us, and it was just a great event to recognize outstanding students that are doing well in all the schools in Titusville. And so I just thought it was a good honor, they got to come up on stage, a lot of these kids were coming from elementary schools, middle schools, and so it kind of breaks down that barrier of what Titusville High is going to look like for them, which was very exciting. So that was a great event. And I also got the opportunity to attend the Space Coast Bowling Team's Bowl-a-thon, which I am not a bowler by any means, but it was a great event, and the amount of community support that came out to help them raise money to get to Nationals was absolutely encouraging. They have an upcoming event where they're going to do axe throwing at Stumpy's, and they will be, that's coming towards the end of this month. So if you guys see that on social media, go out there, throw some axes, it helps get our kids to Nationals, which is going to be a great expense. And then the other thing is, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you teachers from the bottom of our heart, you guys are the backbone of what happens in our schools, and without you, we don't have a school. So, just want to give a shout out to all the amazing educators that we have in Brevard County Public Schools, we are grateful for each and every single one of you. What you do is a hard job, but we appreciate you from the bottom of our hearts.
Mr. Trent.
All right. Well, I'll start also with the School Lunch Hero, I was able to help out, if you want to call it that, with breakfast at Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School. That staff is amazing, Trish, Maureen, and Dana, the amount of kids that they, again, they know by name, but I asked Trish some of the secrets, and she just said, absolutely say good morning or good afternoon to every single kid, no matter what. I mean, she learns what they order, there were times that the kid just showed up, didn't say a word, you know, like, kids don't like to talk, and she just went to the cooler, got their colored drink, got their chip, he put in his number, and just went on, and it's a language just between Trish and the students there, but they do a wonderful job. I'm not ratting out any teachers, but there were multiple teachers that came up in the morning, and went right to the back to see if the fresh cookies were done, and they weren't at the time, but they said they could come back and get them later, so they must do that often. But it was, it was a good morning, so, I have a little history in the restaurant business, so it was a little flashback there, but the kids thoroughly enjoyed it, and I just, it's amazing how many kids don't take advantage of, for example, the breakfast, the stuff was great, so hats off to them. A little bit more out there, I was able to attend Roosevelt's Elementary Spring Choir Concert, the admins, Ms. Lot and Ms. Bala, along with the music teacher, Ms. Delucia, just puts on a wonderful program, that music program there is exceptional, so they did a great job. Congratulations to the Cocoa Beach Boys baseball team, who won districts, that was one of the very, they're very congratulatory being there, but they found themselves in the spot that they probably didn't think they were going to be at the beginning of districts, they were a very low seed, it's okay to say that, but they overcame the odds, and they won districts, and they're playing today, I think, down south. So, that was a wonderful, wonderful game, the entire town really came out to see what had happened, and I think they beat MCC for the championship there. Let's see, other than that, it's the week for teachers, I know you guys put in a hard year, and you know, every week we were thankful that you do the things that you do, I know you're counting down the days, not that you don't want to be in school, you're counting down the days that you're going to miss your kids, I get it, but thank you for coming to school every day, doing what you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Trent, Ms. Jenkins.
Yeah, I also want to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of my colleagues. It has been a rough couple of years, but the one thing that remains constant for all of our educators is the reason why they're doing it, and the students that they do it for. So I just want to acknowledge you, and I want to encourage you to not only appreciate the Starbucks gift cards that you're going to get in sleuths, but also the smiles and the hugs and the respect and love that you're going to get pouring at you this week from your students, as well as their families that love you. So, I have something extra special tonight, and I'm going to go off script a little bit, Mr. Bruins, sorry. This is going to show you that our staff is ready and able to help, no matter what is needed, and I'm really excited about this, because the person I'm about to speak about, coincidentally, is my neighbor and a friend of mine, a neighbor who is so ready to help that I got a phone call from him the other day, and I thought he was going to tell me that my crazy dog had leapt my six-foot fence again and was escaping and running around the neighborhood, but that's not the story that he shared with me. He shared something pretty incredible, and we invited him here tonight, he brought his amazing, wonderful family to celebrate his tremendous actions. So, Mr. Gibbs was an educator for Brevard Public Schools, he worked at Johnson Middle School as a history teacher, and he decided to start subbing recently, to get back into the classroom and support Brevard Public Schools, because he loves us so much. And while substituting at O'Gally High School, he stumbled upon a student who was choking, and he quickly ran into action, performed the Heimlich maneuver, and saved that student's life. He was in the right place at the right time, and acted quickly as can be. We are so appreciative of you, I'm appreciative of you as a friend and a neighbor, I know, I know your love and dedication for public schools, I know your love and dedication for students, and I'm not surprised by this story, I was surprised to receive it that day, but I'm so appreciative of you, and I am so appreciative that you decided to step back into our schools and substitute as well, so double kudos for you, double thank you, and thank you to your wife, who is a nurse who probably taught you how to respond correctly. And we also have the Assistant Principal from O'Gally High School, Mr. John Rousch here tonight, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure, didn't have, it looked like you had something to say. I want to say thank you to everybody that's here tonight, we appreciate, we have a whole host of administrators that are coming on, we also have an amazing cheerleading squad that's going to be over here, we'll talk about that in a second, and we see many of the faces that come up here to our Board meetings, and we really appreciate your input and everything else. I wanted to say thank you also for Teacher Appreciation Week, as a former teacher, also, many of the things that we're about to roll out, and we did today during the, I'll let you talk to that, Ms. Sue, there's some big news coming for all of our teachers, and there's probably going to be a really good retention issue that we just announced today, so there's that. The other piece is, is that I wanted to say, you talk about baseball, Mr. Trent, just so you know that Vieira also is in the playoffs, and they're moving against Melbourne tomorrow, Rockledge High is versus American Heritage, and O'Gally's playing Pembroke Pines tonight. So our teams, just so you know, we win more state titles here in football and many of the other sports than any other Central Florida teams, and one of the problems we have on the baseball front is that, and many of the others, is that as we get further down into the playoffs, we end up facing against some of these private schools that are allowed to recruit, and they have an entire mob that's down there, so we're going to go at it again, we went at it again last year, O'Gally had some things that happened that wasn't so nice last year, but we're going to support our teams, and we're going to go to bat for them as they get further down in the playoffs. I also wanted to say thank you to the Propeller Club and our amazing teachers and staff there. What ended up happening is, is the Propeller Club is an organization that's out at the Cape that gives many scholarships and opportunities for our students to work on the job training and other things, so they had me speak out there, and I will tell you that I was flabbergasted by the amount of people that are a part of that club that I never knew, they are amazing, everybody that's involved out there, and then also the fact that we were honored in front of Cape Canaveral, the port, for many of the efforts that our schools have done over there. I wanted to say thank you, there's one thing that I wanted to bring up prior to getting with the West Shore Cheer Team, I had the very nice opportunity to sit with Ms. Kublank at Manatee Elementary, and she's the media assistant, and I wanted to say from the bottom of my heart, as we move forward, there's a lot of budgetary items that we're going to be working on, but our media assistants are getting slammed, both from the reviews that we're doing, to all of the new requirements that we're doing, and we took away one of their assistants in the elementary schools, and many of the high schools and middle schools. So I think, I wanted to say thank you for Ms. Kublank for laying out all of the needs that she has, and we will be working towards some of those goals in the future. Now, let's get to the fun stuff over here. I want to take a moment to celebrate West Shore Junior/Senior High School and their competitive cheer team in an inaugural season to remember. I don't know if everybody in here remembers, but we had a, we rushed to have the opportunity, and thanks to the individuals that are inside this room, the team is here along with coach and school administrators, please come to the front, because you guys are amazing. So, come on up. This team was, this was the first year of the cheer team, something that I wanted to see happen for this school, and these are the students with their coach, went to Nationals in year number one at Walt Disney World, they competed, and actually, it was on TV, and I saw that, like, literally when you told me about this and we started moving forward with it, it was running all weekend on TV. They competed in the co-division, finishing 10th in the nation. Guys, it's 10th in the nation off of the first year we had a program. I just wanted to say congratulations to the students and Coach Caitlin Hoskins, we are happy for you and proud of you, and dedicated in talent. Coach Hoskins, do you have to say a few words?
Yeah, so, is it on?
Yeah, oh, wait, let me turn it on for you, hang on, we can do that up here, there you go.
Can you hear me, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the school board for supporting this endeavor, we had a really amazing first season, so thankful for all of our parents, our hard-working athletes, our administrators, everybody that made this possible, the opportunities that this sport is affording, our cheerleaders, we had two tryout for college teams, we have a few more that want to cheer in college in the future, so that was the whole point of bringing competitive cheer to Brevard schools, so we're very excited for our first year and all that we accomplished, we never imagined we would have such a successful year with the assistance of Coach Hardy over here, we just can't be more proud of our athletes.
How, how did you do it? Like, you go 10th in the nation on the first year you put a team together? I mean, what do you guys, what kind of special sauce do you guys have?
A lot of hard work, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into this season, I don't know if you guys know how it works, we went to Tampa, you had to qualify to be able to go to the national competition, so they only selected four teams, and we were one of the four, so we were really excited with that, and then we competed against 48 teams on day one at Walt Disney World, and then we made it to day two, which we were just happy to be there, so we didn't expect anything, and then it was announced that the 48 teams, they took 15 to finals day three, so we were screaming and crying in the hotel room, so excited for that, so, it's definitely a core memory that I think we will all remember.
Ms. Hardy, thank you so much, many people don't understand, but Ms. Hardy was pivotal for making all of this happen, as she completely would not stop saying, "We need to have competitive cheer." So Ms. Hardy, do you want to take a second?
Oh, well, thank you, first of all, thank you to the Board and all the BPS staff and administration for making it possible for us to have competitive cheer. Mr. Susan Wright, I would not leave him alone until he said yes to competition cheer, because I knew this could be the outcome for Brevard. And although we might be the only team in Brevard that went to Nationals this year, there's many more to come, and what many people don't know is, on top of preparing a competitive team, they also have to cheer at basketball games, do pep rallies at school, and the incredible students. So these athletes are not just like, oh, they play their one football game every week, they're cheering on Tuesday night, Wednesday night, going to practice on Thursday, going to competition on Saturday, like, they really have full schedules, and they were incredible. Like Coach Hoskins said, she really put in a lot of time, effort, and planning into this, and with the help of the parents and the community, the school administrators, we came in 10th, and this year we're bringing back way more than 10th, too.
Nice, well, and many people, as we go to expand the athletic options for our students, this is the reason why, because you have the smiles of tonight and the successes that they have. I wanted to say thank you, we're going to steal a second, did you guys have, did you guys want to like, put a routine together, you guys going to tumble in here? Do you need mats, like, what do we need to do here?
Well, we thought you were doing the tumbling.
I am, I, I'm very good at doing like, all kinds of somersaults and everything like that.
That's what we heard, no, they're going to do the school fight song, which is part of their competition routine, that won them 10th in the nation.
Do we need to remove the ceiling tiles up here for anything?
Yeah, we're not going to be doing any stunting tonight, because it's not quite tall enough, but you'll see the rest of it, and it's really cool.
Hey, I want to say to each one of you, you are the competitive wing to a lot of cheerleaders that wanted to go compete, and we never had that opportunity inside of our county, and now they do, so your success will drive others to join and be successful. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Do you want to give a team captain a second to talk? Come on, come on, yeah, go. She knows who she is. Fill us in.
Hi, I'm Riley, and I just want to say thank you so much to the school board for helping us and their support along the way. It sounds like cheesy, but we really wouldn't have been able to do it like, without you guys, especially funding our mats, we started off with three mats, but, and then we got to 12, which is like, the full panel like we do at competitions, and that was really helpful, and thank you so much for recognizing us today, and I just love my team, and I'm so happy with what we've accomplished this past year.
All right, now maybe, yep. Maybe next year, we'll come to the competition and support you guys as Board members, let's get a picture with you guys after you guys do your cheer. Yeah, yeah, I'm excited, I'm excited. If your music doesn't work, I have some classic rock we can put on.
Fabulous.
I'm actually wearing the colors, I didn't even know.
I'm going to come get a picture with you guys, that's okay.
Yeah, we're all kind of wearing the colors.
Come on, Sue.
Come on, Sue, we got to eat.
Oh, I want.
Thank you, thank you.
Where you guys have done this before? People that pose for me. I love it. Okay, look at me first. That's exciting. One, two, three.
Hands caught.
Yay!
You want to be on the phone with us?
You're funny.
Just so everybody understands, Mr. Fleming has said that next year he will be part of the cheer program, and we're looking forward to seeing that. Yep, that's where we're going to. All right, Ms. Sue.
Thank you, sir.
Go with the announcements.
Okay, so a couple of things, first, as Mr. Susan alluded to, do you want to let everybody know that our voters approved a millage for operational expenses, salaries, benefits, and programs back in November, and we've been working with our team, and we are able to start the, start the compensation part of that on August 31st for our employees, so we're so excited about that, and thank you to our team, we had really a cross-functional effort with HR and educational technology and finance, trying to make sure that that all happens, and we're just, we're just super excited, so thank you to our voters and to the public for what they've done for our employees and for our retention, so I want everybody to know to please come on back and be part of the BPS team in August, so thank you for that opportunity. And then I do have a couple of recognitions. I too want to say thank you to our teachers, and just let you know that from the operational side of the house, we appreciate you all, too, we know what you do, we understand, and really appreciate what you do for our students, and we want to be there to support you, so just I want to say thank you on behalf of all of the folks in operations, we appreciate what you do, too. Also want to recognize our ESF cafeteria folks, they feed the big kids here at ESF, and I have the same experience as Mr. Trent noted, like, they know I need chocolate chip cookies, and they know what I like for lunch, so I just want to say thanks to Carrie and her team at the ESF cafeteria, they do an awesome job taking care of us here at ESF. And then I also want to recognize Will Hensman, Will is a Senior Procurement Agent in our procurement department, and he received the Central Florida Chapter of the National Institute of Government Purchasing 2023 Volunteer of the Year Award. Yeah, he did.
Sounds like some huge interview.
Yeah, so, so Will's an awesome guy, we do a lot of procurement through their department with, from facilities, and Will has helped us with a couple of projects, and is just a stellar member of a stellar team, and so, awesome that Will was able to get recognized for his work on behalf of the chapter. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Cody there in the back corner, Dr. Cody has been with us since the first of the year as our interim deputy superintendent, and has helped us navigate through some of our discipline issues and working to make sure that we're on track with resolving those, and she will be leaving us as of May 12th, but I wanted to recognize her and thank her for her work on behalf of BPS, appreciate you joining us, thank you, Dr. Cody. That's all, Mr. Susan, thank you.
And I think not many people understand the work that the staff did, and I know you didn't want to honor yourself, but Sue, you worked diligently to try to say that we would be able to get that running on August 31st with the millage, she also worked diligently to make sure that the Oversight Committee was done correctly, she also did diligently to make sure that it all wrapped together and we could announce it a little bit early, so it's just a huge opportunity, so I wanted to say thank you, Sue, for all of your benefits, it was amazing, so thank you. All right, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, on this evening's agenda, we have five, or, I'm sorry, let's start that again. On this evening's agenda, we have Administrative Staff Recommendations, 26 Consent Items, Five Public Hearings, Three Action Items, and Three Information Items. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the addition of F-20 through F-22, Job Descriptions for Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Millage Compensation Specialist, and Millage Compensation Analyst, H-40, Superintendent's Employment Agreement, and I-43, School Board Member District Residence Area Redistricting. Revisions were made to A-6, Administrative Staff Recommendations, F-9, Student Expulsions, F-16, Reappointment Nominations of Continuing Professional Services Contract Teachers for 23 Professional Services Contract Teachers for 2324, F-17, Reappointment Nomination of Annual Contract Teachers for 2324, F-18, Administrative and Professional Reappointment Nominations for 2324, and F-19, Reappointment Nominations of Support Personnel and School Safety and Security Specialists for 2324.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Han, would you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, sir. There are 21 items for your consideration.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There it is. Ms. Han.
Thank you very much. So we have several new assistant principals joining our team, and I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize them. So we're gonna start with Laura Barna. Laura was reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Delora Middle School to the position of Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior Senior High School. Congratulations, Laura.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity for my career and leadership growth. I am looking forward to supporting the community of Space Coast.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to introduce Michael Gladon. He's being reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Bayside High School to the position of Assistant Principal at O'Gally High School. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. There's so many people to thank since I've been with Brevard County. All my old administrators, school board, staff, directors, my family were my number one support, so that's why they're here today. I look forward to my next step at O'Gally High School. I will sincerely miss all of Bayside High School, but hopefully I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Gladon. And the next, I'd like to introduce Jasmine Jackson-Burine. She's being reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Madison Middle School to the position of Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior Senior High School. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Most of all, I would like to thank Dr. Lips for this wonderful opportunity, for seeing so much in me. I would like to thank my family and my support, Marie. And of course, I cannot wait to join Mr. Flora. So I'm very excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
Nice. Congratulations. And next, I'd like to introduce Kavitha Tracy. She is being reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Johnson Middle School to the position of Assistant Principal at Heritage High School. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Han and the board, for this opportunity. I wanted to thank everybody in secondary leading and learning for mentoring me and preparing me for this next step in my career. To Mrs. Middleton and my Longhorn Johnson family for challenging me every day to be a better administrator. And to my family, who, since I started teaching, has dealt with all the long nights, everything. So thank you, because you guys are amazing. They never say no, and so I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them and my amazing support. Thank you.
And the next, I'd like to introduce Kelly Bombriant. She's being reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Stone Magnet Middle School to the position of Assistant Principal at Satellite High School. Congratulations.
I'd also like to thank the board for approving this tonight. And, you know, Courtney Lundy, for the past two years, it's been a fun ride. My family for always being amazing, and, and Mr. Pruitt for taking a chance on me. Lena, Molly, and Sheri for always being just a text or a phone call away. I appreciate that as well. So thank you.
And the next, I'd like to introduce Mark Malik, who's being reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Merritt Island High School to the position of Assistant Principal at Adult and Community Education. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the school board, Ms. Han, and Dr. Sullivan for this opportunity to be here today. I currently would like to thank my current principal, Mr. Raymer, who gave me the opportunity for my first administrative experience. Spent two wonderful years at Merritt Island High School. I will always cherish those memories I had there. And then obviously, Ms. Benjamin, my current principal, or the principal I will be going to at Community and Adult Ed. And I'd like to just thank you all for this new opportunity, a new chapter in my life with my newborn, who is two and a half weeks old, and enjoying the meeting today with everyone.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Brittany Pasta Wade, reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Viera High School to the position of Assistant Principal at Southwest Middle School. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Han and the board, for approving this. I'm a product of Brevard Public Schools, so I'm super excited to continue on and working here. I wanted to thank everybody, my whole squad that came out tonight from Viera, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Legate, Mr. Melendez, Maggie, all you guys, Corporal Williams. And a big, a big thank you to Ms. Delauter for taking a chance on me and bringing me on her team. I'm super excited. And the rest of the team, Matt and Melissa, I'm super, super excited to work with you guys. And then a big thank you to my mentor, Joe Flora, who has just really grown me as an administrator. I would not be here without you. So I really, really appreciate everything that you've done for me. And then my family, my parents for holding down the two littles, and my husband for being amazing. So I really appreciate everybody, and I look forward to the great work at Southwest.
Thank you. And the next, I'd like to introduce Genesis Rowe, who's being reclassified to the position of Assistant Principal at McNair Magnet Middle School. Congratulations.
Thank you, board. I'd like to say thank you to you all. Thank you to Brevard County. Dr. Sullivan always says she steals talent from outside. I'm from Orange County, so I am a traitor. But I am a happy traitor at this place, here in this place. I want to give thanks to my first principal, Jasmine Delauter at McNair. She brought me on, and I will look forever be grateful for the opportunity that she gave me. And to my current principal, Dr. Richardson, who is just a bunch of fun to work with. Was nervous to take this position, but when you have a strong team and people that are for you, it makes it easy to say yes. So I just wanted to say thank you. And to my beautiful family, once again. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Sarah Strauss, reclassified from the position of teacher on assignment at Stone Magnet Middle School to the position of Assistant Principal at Stone Magnet Middle School. Congratulations.
Forgive me, please, I had to write this out. It truly takes a village to raise a child. Thank you to the school board for approving this exciting opportunity to be an Assistant Principal at Stone. I'd like to thank Dr. Sullivan, Mr. Alba, Ms. Bowman, Ms. Weibel, Ms. Vega, and Ms. Hyam for believing in me. I appreciate working alongside my awesome staff and student family. I have learned so much from each of the admin teams I worked with, especially Principal Lundy, Ms. Bombriant, Ms. Wilkerson, and Mr. Weaver. A special thank you to Barry Pitchard, Kathleen Campione, Debbie Lebers, Robert Spinner, Katrina Hudson, Jeff Coverdale, Liz Tatro, and Hillary Poole for constant teacher leader support. I appreciate all of my Florida and Wisconsin colleagues from who I have learned so much. Thank you to my former teachers, especially my favorites, Darlene Mockton and Sheri Baker. You both gave me the drive to teach, to be a teacher, just like you. She flew in from Wisconsin. A huge shout out to the Stone community, our awesome compassionate village that generously supports our students, staff, and families each week. Thank you. Thank you to my husband for always believing in me. When I continuously stay late at school and you have a hot meal on the table, I love you. Thank you to my entire family and the best parents I could ever have. See, it truly takes a village to raise a child and Assistant Principal. Our students need every one of us. Like my mom always said, it's a beautiful day. Go Gophers.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Williams, who's being reclassified from the position of Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior Senior High School to the position of Assistant Principal at Melbourne High School. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Han, board, Dr. Sullivan, and directors, for this opportunity. I'd like to thank the first principal who gave me an opportunity as administrator, a friend and a mentor, Ms. Delauter. Thank you, Mr. Flora, and my Space Coast family for all the experiences, fun and challenging, to get me to this place. I'd like to thank my family for always supporting my late nights. My son is not here because he's the cause of most of those late nights. He's on the practice field. And last but not least, thank you, Dr. Kurt, for this opportunity. I'm extremely excited to be part of the Melbourne family and culture. Go Bulldogs.
And now I'd like to introduce Jasmine Baez, who is being reclassed from the position of Assistant Principal at Satellite High School to the position of Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Magnet High School. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say that I have a huge support system for anything and everything that I do. That starts with my family, my mom. Thank you for always being there for me. My son, who is actually graduating this year, which is insane to even think about, for me. But right now, this feels like I'm going back to where I started, which is insane, because I literally started my teaching career at Palm Bay High School. So thank you, Jeb, for bringing me back. And Mr. Pruitt, thank you for seeing all the good and always supporting me and guiding me throughout the years, well, the two years that I was there. But thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being here. Appreciate it.
I just want to offer my final congratulations to our, all of our new assistant principals. You guys have got a big job ahead of you, being leaders for BPS, and looking forward to working with all of you. Congratulations again.
Can we get that teacher from Wisconsin to stand up for a minute? Because that's pretty incredible. That's a pretty incredible story. Where's the support system from Wisconsin? There you are. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Great point, Ms. Jenkins. If we'll take a second and let everybody kind of leave the boardroom now. I think that we're, we're gonna move, what's that? Oh, yeah, want to do a big photo? Okay, all right, let's go.
It's picture time.
All of you guys, come on up. Let's do a photo.
Matt's gonna kick them all out.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs, for getting me these. 14. Welcome back, everybody. We're now at the public comment portion of the meeting. We have 14 public speakers, and each will receive three minutes. I will call up three speakers at a time. The first three speakers are Hyla Mercer, Blythe Grossman, Gabrielle Russo.
Good evening. My name is Hyla Mercer. I'm a retired BPS teacher and principal who now volunteers in our schools. My belief is that anyone engaged in education should dedicate themselves to increasing student achievement and to closing the glaring achievement gaps between student subgroups. That is the purpose of schools. We now face a situation where politics have taken our attention away from that primary goal. An investigation that took 161 days to complete and another 30 to be made public states that a board member was not truthful on his application to work for BPS and therefore cannot work for the school system for one year. The original allegations against the board member were made during his campaign for the seat he currently holds, thus giving the appearance that the charges were politically motivated. More recently, the deputy mayor of Cocoa, who substitute teaches in our schools, had a similar allegation made against him. It took five days for the district to bar him from subbing for one year. While we do not know the reasons for the discrepancy in the time it took to make each decision, it gives the appearance of privilege on the one hand and bias, or worse, on the other. City council members reach decisions that sometimes make constituents angry. It appears that the allegations against Mr. Lavander Hearn were also politically motivated. Mr. Gene Trent, the board member who is no longer allowed to teach in the school system for a year, is, and is charged with leading our district, personally forwarded the complaint against Mr. Hearn for action. Now, three high-need schools in Cocoa and Rockledge are denied for one year a substitute teacher who served as a role model of what is possible through vision, hard work, and determination. Mr. Trent's presence on the board sends a message to students that people do not have to follow the rules. A recent BPS survey identifies discipline as the number one concern among citizens. His continued presence on the board contributes to the problem. Not much is asked of us, but that we do justly, that we love kindness, and that we walk humbly. I am asking all of us that in some instances, just because we can, does not mean that we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. Next up, Blythe Grossman, Gabrielle Russo, Tiara Songer.
Good evening. I'm a lifelong Brevard resident, a product of Brevard Public Schools, and a proud parent to two current BPS students. However, I stand here tonight as an educator. I have a bachelor's in English Education, a master's in English Lit. I've received commendations from the DOE. I've been on your textbook adoption committees. I've been nominated Teacher of the Year, and I've served in your community for I've been nominated Teacher of the Year, and I've served in your community for nineteen years. I say all of this to establish that I am an expert in my field, and as an expert, I can say with confidence that the practices of your book reselection committee or reconsideration committee are going to leave students short-changed. We are underestimating our students, who are very capable of reading hard things and using those experiences to become more skilled readers and thinkers. Year after year, my AP students tell me in their course and reflection that The Kite Runner was the best book we read, that it had been impactful and moving. I have pages of student testimonials to support this, and I would share them with any committee, but the problem is, no one is asking, no one is asking to hear from teachers or students. I would expect that our district would have committees in place where teachers have a voice as strong as those of parents and community members, where our years of experience and education would be heard and valued, and that is not currently happening. Pulling a book out of classrooms without understanding the pedagogical reasoning that went into selecting it is problematic. A teacher on the committee could provide insight into why a text is taught, at what age it would be appropriate, and specifically in which classes. Making those determinations is part of the job of the teacher, and it's a big responsibility, and we don't take it lightly. The alternative is allowing fear to rule us and making knee-jerk reactions anytime we find something distasteful. So, should we scrap literature altogether? The Odyssey is about a man who cheats on his wife across the Mediterranean. Romeo and Juliet has not one but two teen suicides. Hamlet, incest and murder. Macbeth, witchcraft, suicide, and murder. The Great Gatsby, infidelity and murder. Where does it stop? It doesn't stop until we return to our senses. We are becoming so reactionary that we are pulling books off shelves simply because some people find them objectionable, without first asking ourselves what literary value these texts hold and why the experts may have found merit in them in the first place. There are few things I am more confident in than my ability to teach teenagers in an effective and meaningful way through literature that reaches them. If we refuse to include teachers in the conversation and instead villainize and isolate them, then we are placing fear above common sense. We can't offer AP classrooms or classes but withhold college-level materials. We can't be a district that respects teachers but doesn't place any trust in them. These things are mutually exclusive. A medical board without a doctor on it seems ill-advised, as does a book reconsideration committee without a single English teacher. I trust my doctors to diagnose my ailments.
Thank you, Ms. Grossman.
I trust my financial advisor to handle my money. It's time.
Thank you, Ms. Grossman. Appreciate you coming out. Ms. Gabrielle Russo, Tiara Songer, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gabrielle Russo. In 2019, I was a senior in the Bravard Public System, taking AP Literature. When I opened my AP testing booklet, as many high schoolers have done this past week, I saw the following prompt from my free response. In his 2004 novel, Magic Seeds, V.S. Napole writes, "It is wrong to have an ideal view of the world. That's where the mischief starts. That's where everything starts unraveling." Below this prompt, there were a list of books where I was asked to identify a character from one of these pieces of literature and identify how their ideal view of the world resulted in a positive or negative consequence and how it illuminates the work as a whole. The list of books was diverse, but all had mature topics to discuss, from death to violence to mental health crises. Some of these books have been directly brought forth for review in Bravard County, including The Kite Runner, which is the novel that I chose to write my essay about. After writing the AP essay, I never thought I would have to use my English literature experience again. However, it was this English curriculum that allowed me to take the next steps when I applied and competed against students across the country by submitting essays, test scores, and grades, all to get into the University of Florida. I was on par with these students because I had competitive education, the same access to literary pieces, and the same depth to my curriculum. I worry about losing the depth of our curriculum when we lack media specialists and teacher votes on our boards and books in our libraries. How will our students compete academically with students across county lines if we do not have the same access to the books that AP tests directly draw upon? I went to college to become an engineering major, jokingly said to be a degree for people who don't read. However, it was in this degree that the life lessons I've learned throughout books come to life. In my chemical engineering curriculum, we discussed war, engineering ethics, chemical disasters, all of which were far removed from my home in Bravard County. However, because of my exposure to a life outside of my home through books such as The Kite Runner, Slaughterhouse-Five, among others, I was able to empathize and understand the gravity of these ethical dilemmas. As a recent college graduate, as of this Friday, I believe I'm a better engineer entering the workforce because of this empathy. We do not live in an ideal world, and as Napole writes, "I believe it is wrong to have an ideal view of the world." By removing books that discuss life's ugliness, we take away an essential growth experience for our students. The beauty of school is that we can discuss this complex world in a safe setting with love, kindness, and the support of our peers and faculty. I urge you to take this into consideration and ensure the review process for books is based on academic merit, with input from our teachers and media specialists, not idealism, so that our students leave this county with empathy and academic success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. Ms. Tiara Songer, John Kirven, Samantha Kirven, please.
My name is Tiara Songer, and I am here tonight to share a letter penned by Khalid Hosini, author of the award-winning bestseller, The Kite Runner. It follows. Inside a drawer in my office desk sits a stash of manila envelopes. Inside each are some of the letters I have collected over a span of nearly twenty years and that I continue to. They have come to me from high school students from all across the US. In these writings, the students share with me, often quite poignantly, what impact reading The Kite Runner has had on their lives. For some, the book is a clarion call to stand up to bullies, to defy intolerance. Others hear familiar echoes in Amir's strained bond with his father and his struggles to measure up. Yet others, perhaps inspired by the book's de facto tagline, "There is a way to be good again," speak of the desire to volunteer, learn more, be more tolerant of others, mend broken ties, muster the courage to do the right and just thing, no matter how difficult. For many students, those who write me, as well as the many I have met in high schools across the country, The Kite Runner is their first window into Afghan culture, most openly admit to knowing little about the country outside of its media depiction as a violent, unhappy land perpetually racked by war and misery. But because they find in the story of Amir and Hassan resonant parallels to their own lives around friendship, family, love, courage, cowardice, Afghanistan becomes a real place. They gain a more nuanced and compassionate perspective on the country and its people, and they express gratitude for it. Perhaps the most recurring word I hear from students is empathy. It isn't surprising. Studies have shown that reading fiction improves the ability to intuit and understand the feelings of other human beings. Books remain our most powerful teachers of empathy. They remind us of our immutable connections as a species sharing this planet. They open the world to us. They help us feel less alone and find solace in one another. Their gift is immeasurable. Stripping students of this gift is a tragic mistake. Hearing from high school students in their own words, in person and in letter, has convinced me that they are more than sophisticated and mature enough to digest and contextualize the themes raised by The Kite Runner. They are appropriately and constructively challenged by the book, and they are more than up to the task, learning valuable lessons about injustice, discrimination, tyranny, the perils of religious extremism, et cetera. I am a parent myself. I understand the parental impulse to safeguard our children from harm, but banning books like The Kite Runner does not protect the students of Bravard County at all. It betrays them instead. It robs them of the chance that we, as parents and instructors, owe them, the chance to broaden their human community, to let them walk the world in another's shoes for a while, to foster empathy for others, to be challenged by the experience, and perhaps take a small step towards becoming fuller, richer versions of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Kirven, please.
Good evening. As some of you know, this is my second time coming in and speaking to the board. I had a lot of stuff that I wanted to go over, but I'm only going to hit on a couple of points today. Specifically, during the workshop earlier about dress code, there was terminology used, and I don't exactly think that everybody on the board understands the term furry. I think that you need to understand the definition of what the furry is before you start using it in context and/or out of context. I'll read it straight from here. A furry, used as a noun in an informal sense, is an enthusiast for animal characters with human characteristics, in particular, a person who dresses up in costume as such a character or uses one as an avatar online. Now, this is a very basic definition, okay? And this very basic definition is the first thing that comes up on Google. My youngest child is on the ASL spectrum, okay? When she was very young, she hid from people because she was afraid of people and conversation. She's not afraid of me. She's not afraid of mom or her older sister. But she's the first one that'll go to bat for her older sister, too. In fact, I recall an occurrence in Fort Leonard Wood where I was stationed at, where both of my kids were playing on a playground, and my oldest daughter was being bullied by another child. My youngest daughter stood up for my oldest, who had no idea what was going on other than her old big sister was being bullied. Fast forward, dealing with the other students inside of BPS schools at Sunrise Elementary, she utilized your quote "furry tendencies" to deal with the situations that were being pushed in her way. She was dealing with those situations by utilizing what made her comfortable to be able to cope and to coexist with the quote "normal" people of the classroom. I'll leave it at that. Mr. Susan, I'm at a small velocity. When you walked into this room before the board meeting, you were half undressed. I'm just going to say that's slightly unprofessional. I do appreciate the support of West Shore, because West Shore's an amazing school, and it's one that my daughter attends, but it is unprofessional, and you do me a disservice by not putting your hand on your heart when you pledge the allegiance. Thank you.
Hand is on my heart. Thank you, Mr. Kirven, Samantha Kirven, Jaclyn Chandler, Bernard Bryan, please.
Hello. Good afternoon. So, today I'm going to be talking just about dyscalculia. I talk a lot about dyslexia, but there's more to that than meets the eye. Another, well, common occurrence is dyscalculia. Now, what is dyscalculia? Dyscalculia is the, is difficulty in learning or comprehending patterns in understanding numbers. It's commonly caused when, like, subtracting or adding is hu, it causes a huge amount of difficulty, as long with multiplying and dividing, just numbers in general. It's similar to dyslexia because dyslexia, as in with letters, can be, well, letters will look differently. Some letters can be flipped, or it won't even look like a letter at all. Numbers can do the same thing. Now, dyslexia, sorry, dyscalculia is a learning issue, and it makes it harder for understanding correlations with numbers, and that is also common. It happens to a lot of kids. It's pretty, it's out there, just like dyslexia, but it's not seen as much. It is more, it's more or less, less known about than dyslexia, which is ironic because so many people have it. But, in a fun fact about it, it is a common co-occurrence, which basically means that with dysgraphia, dyscalculia, and dyslexia, along with ADHD ironically, they all, for some reason, have a positive correlation, as in, if you have one, you're more likely to have the other. In my case, I have ADHD. I also have dyslexia, so it's a pretty interesting fact I learned about today. It is not, it does not mean that the child has low self-esteem, or they are not trying. They're trying their best. It is not that they have lower intelligence. They can be very, very smart. They just have a different way of seeing the world. It's as if your brain is wired such a different way, and it's not what other people would be the quote-unquote "normal." And it is not the same as being math anxious. Thank you for your time. That's all for tonight.
Thank you very much. Jaclyn Chandler, Bernard Bryan, Crystal Casey, please.
Good evening. I listened to you this morning, all day. I know you've had a long schedule, but I want to address a few things that was mentioned today, the parent survey. I saw the numbers, but I would love to see the comments that parents made, because as a, I'm retired military. I worked here at Patrick, retired twenty-three years of service, and I also did surveys for each unit on the base. And comments mean more than those numbers. You have to put them together, so I would appreciate if we would see some of the comments to support those numbers. Also, a discussion was about, no, I wanted to talk to you about the way we talk, way we communicate about inclusiveness. I heard Mr. Sousa say, women, no, no, something about the military, and that we should talk to the wives of military members. There are more than wives of military members, so we should address them as spouses. Also, I want to give you a little history lesson, not too much. I've had seven generations. I've lived seven generations, and I've watched them change throughout my lifetime. So, I want to remind you that this month is a board versus, the board versus the, I'm sorry, Brown versus the Board of Education. It seems like we're going back there. If you remember, if you don't know your history, you are doomed to repeat it, and that's exactly what we're doing. Also, I also listened to the dress codes. It's amazing how we, as adults, talk about those things that we did in our lifetime when we were younger, and we tried to implement those rules that they were implemented before. Also, the book banning. We have been banning books since 1982. Again, we are doomed to repeat history if we don't understand it. So, I would just like for you to think about what we're doing. I don't want to say it's all political and it's all this and that. I want to say that our children need to learn what's going on. If they don't learn it from you, our teachers, they're going to learn it from the internet. And now, we're dealing with artificial intelligence. So, what's going to happen? We also have TV programs that, if they really want to learn things, there are so many documentaries on the TV that you can learn. And I've been listening to that, re, establishing myself in history from listening to all the things that are going on. Our children should be privileged to that, because it enhances the culture of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler. Bernard Bryan, Crystal Casey, Julia Anton.
Good evening. It's such a blessing to be here. I drove four hundred miles to be at this meeting today, so, that tells you how much I love all kids, love all community, and love what you guys do. I just want to say that we're here to serve every student with excellence as a standard. And one of the things I couldn't sleep about last night is around redistricting. So, the community is concerned. The NAACP is concerned, because we don't understand why redistricting has taken place. What is the benefit of it? And typically, when you look at redistricting under this environment, it also drives an advantage for some group. So, please communicate with us. What are the advantages of this redistricting strategy? How is it going to serve all students and how it's going to serve all parents? So, that's my concern. So, if you can please share with the community, you know, what's the purpose of that? The other thing that I'm very much concerned about, and I've discussed this in many other board meetings, I am very much concerned about the voucher program. I got to give you credit. The Bravard Public Schools did a tremendous job in communicating the One Millage, the One Millage proposal. You did an excellent job. You did an excellent job calling group meetings together, subgroups together, talking about the advantage of the One Mill Passage. So we asking if you will use the same strategy to really share with the community, what is your plan in terms of the voucher program? We we need to understand the FTE impact, the staffing impact, the program impact because we are nervous about it. So please, if you will, do what you can to actually communicate. And then lastly, I know we've selected a new superintendent and I know the process was not an easy process. But one of the things we want to keep on the radar is number one, this new leader has a focus toward closing the achievement gap. And this new leader understand the needs of the math and reading discrepancies. But I just want to end with this. I am so happy to be able to work with most of you, all of you really. And the Bevard Public School Administration is an awesome team. It's a great team. I've had great cooperation, but we need to work together. We need to be transparent with one another and look after every student need and every family's concern. So if you can make that commitment, I would appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Crystal Casey, Julia Anton, Kathy Ebersberger.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I too would like some communication. As has previously been stated here just a few moments ago, about a month and a week ago, I sent an email to you Chairman Susan asking for specific information about an incident that occurred at Viera High School on March 28th, 2023. It was an incident of a gun threat by a student and there were verbally named students that this student wished to execute. I specifically asked about the Cessar reporting and whether or not that incident was properly reported to safe schools or not. And as of today, nearly five weeks later, I have not received a response from you. So I'm standing here asking if you would please consider working with me. When I ask these questions, I'm not asking because I don't care. I'm asking because I do care. And this is a bipartisan issue, folks. School safety affects all of our kids, every single one of them. And a little bit of background about me, so you probably don't know me or my background. I am a seventeen and a half year flight attendant and I have worked incidents where the loss of life was definitely in this scenario. I have been in difficult situations, emergency situations in the past. And I will tell you that the level that I feel when I see hazards that could affect children greatly concerns me. So please, if you wouldn't mind responding to my email, I'd really appreciate it. So that was the first thing I wanted to mention and that's regarding your school discipline policy, which as we all know, there was a recent audit with that, April 17th with RMS. I encourage all parents to read about the audit. If you could, take the time, read about it. It's published and there's a wealth of information for you there. The other thing that's unrelated to the school safety, which has to always be first priority, is the book committee. And I'm hearing people voice their concerns about certain books like The Kite Runner. But my opinion is that there is no educational value for sexual assault to be occurring to children in literature that is provided by the superintendent and this board. So that is my personal opinion. I do not agree that pornography nor child sexual assault should ever occur in literature that is given by this VPS Board. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Next up, Julia Anton, Catherine Ebersberger. Ms. Anton.
I try to always come up here very organized and planned what I'm gonna say. But I have to tell you that somebody said something to me late last night as I was ready to go to bed. I didn't have real time to percolate on it. And then I went to work today and I worked all day. So I'm all over the place and forgive me. But the thing that I heard right before I went to bed last night was conversation about the fact that, you know, I'm a native of Alabama. I have traveled almost every state in this country. I have traveled 52 countries. I've been to Madagascar, I've been to England, I've been to France, I've seen the underpants. I've been everywhere. And no matter where I go, anywhere in this whole flipping world, I open my mouth, southern comes out. They say, where are you from? And I say Alabama. And you know what the next thing is? Oh, you must be an ignorant redneck. And it takes me off. And the reason they say that is because the year that I started first grade, the educational priorities had nothing to do with education. They were about keeping the little black children away from the lily white ones. And the whole world watched it, rolled its eyes and said, how stupid is that? And now here we are in 2023 and I've escaped Alabama and come to Florida and I'll be dead gummed. What's the educational priority here? Making sure that children who happen to be gay or transgender or somehow different than straight white men or straight white little girls have to feel ostracized. They must be made invisible. We must not acknowledge the fact that they exist. That's our educational priority. And I can tell you that 60 years from now, Florida students, wherever they are in the world, are gonna be pegged as ignorant bigots because this is the priority we have instead of educating our students. Now we need to do better. Get your priorities straight. It is not important to make sure that rainbows are taken out of the classroom. It is not important to pretend that books are pornography when they're not. And if you're really concerned about a picture of a blowjob in one book, the book's already off the shelf. Parents already had the opportunity to say, don't let my kid check it out. Rip the page out of the book and be done with it. There is a lot that children who suffer abuse can learn from reading about abuse. And there's a lot that children who don't suffer abuse can learn about their peers. Get your priorities straight.
Thank you, Ms. Anton. We appreciate it. Kathy Ebersberger. Paul Raub, Susan Hodgers, Katie Delaney.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ebersberger and I'm a concerned citizen and taxpayer. First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Han for her exceptional leadership in a difficult situation. She deserves the most pay possible for the time she spent as acting superintendent, whether it's the price paid to Dr. Mullins, Dr. Schiller, or Dr. Rendell. Dr. Rendell, congratulations on your new position. I wish you well because your success will mean our students' success. Mrs. Han was successful and called in the waters after two superintendent changes because her integrity was unquestioned. People knew she would tell the truth and not try to hide it. The community trusted her. Trust is earned and right now in our country and our local community, trust is hard to find. Trust in the school board, the teachers, the staff, the students, seemingly everyone has taken a side and distrust anyone they deem on the other side. Mrs. Han as acting superintendent was something of a unicorn. But I believe we can follow her example by committing to a robust ethics policy. I'm somewhat saddened by your decision to adopt option two in the Neola template. While it's true that the administrative procedure sets forth some ethical principles, by putting them in the administrative procedure, you make them less likely to be read and emphasized. The only way our community can be brought together is if both sides adopt the highest ethical principles. Saying will be ethical as the law allows does not invite trust. The school board and the superintendent need to hold themselves to a higher standard. They can't just not violate the law. They have to avoid the appearance of impropriety. To put it bluntly, optics matter and the optics coming out of this school board have been horrible. Mrs. Mercer has talked about the disparities between Mr. Trent and Mr. Hearn. I hope that there's some difference between the two other than that Mr. Hearn is black. But you really need to be open and transparent. You need to show that there is no impropriety. It certainly speaks of the appearance of impropriety. And you need to disclose and not hide from records requests. And the other thing I want all of you to pay attention to this, please, is why did you take the self-reporting requirement out of the ethics policy? Right now, you took out the part that requires to self-report within 48 hours if someone is charged with child abuse or a controlled substance violation. It's not in the administrative procedures and it's taken out of the of the policy. So I really need you, I really think you need to address that.
Thank you. Paul Raub, Susan Hodgers, Katie Delaney.
So are you guys okay? Because this afternoon, it's been brought up already a couple of times, but if I were gonna try and parody someone's gone on the last few months, the fiddling while Rome burns, sometimes probably displaying your I love arson mug. I, yeah, let's monkey with the dress code some more. Let's ban cat ears might definitely be the kind of parody I would come up with. You know, when we we had, you had that superintendent, was it for the superintendent search? So the parental concerns survey a few months ago. And the number one item on on the list of weaknesses or concerns the parents had was discipline. The number two was foster liberty, number three, book banning. If you combine those two into the sort of same thing that they are, they actually outstrip number one. But you could, you know, we could be worrying about discipline, but sure, let's let's ban cat ears. Discipline is tough and complicated. Conformity, that's easy. That's simple and it only makes the weirdos uncomfortable. So that's that's just fine. But why are you guys here? I mean, if the Board of Education and education leads to expertise. And as we've seen to some degree with the discipline to today where we're gonna pretend that, again, cat ears are harming someone somehow, or with removal of the experts from the book review committee process. We're kind of anti-expertise by as a matter of policy as time goes on. So which seems to work, you know, educating people, of course, you know, works against that policy. But cat ears, that's what we're worried about. Or is this, I'm trying to figure, does this somehow also fit with parental choice? The the version of parental choice, which means forbidding things for other people's kids? Like if 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 a vegan parent said, I want all meat reviewed removed from the cafeteria because I don't want my kid exposed to meat and that meat might jump out and force them to eat it. Would you take them seriously? Would you call them parental choice heroes? Would you place them on the on a nutrition committee because I've raised six kids, therefore I'm a nutritionist? I don't think so. And yet. Yeah, that's exactly how things are going in the world of books. Also not gonna jump off a shelf, also not gonna force your kid to read them. And still waiting to hear how taking books away from someone else's kid or taking the choice about that book away from other parents is parental choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raub. Ms. Susan Hodgers, Katie Delaney, and then that's gonna be it.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for on the school board for responding to my emails over the past couple of months. Every single one of you have responded to me in some way except for one. And that one is Mr. Trent. So I'm here to address him. Mr. Trent, I helped you on your campaign, as did many other party members. And now we find you shedding your skin as each new lie is exposed to the light of day, as we've seen the news recently. Recently, such misconduct occurred in Palm Bay. But the mayor did the right thing and city council called to action and the board was queried and the councilman was asked to resign. What you did was unethical and you lied on the application. Mr. Chairman, why hasn't this board done the right thing and queried board members for his resignation? I have three minutes.
You didn't start the tape.
I tried to start it. I would. Audience, please stop. Thank you.
This is exactly what Ms. Casey was saying. No response. This is, Bevards deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodgers. Ms. Katie Delaney, please. You're the last person. What's that? I don't know. Well, I hit it and it didn't go. Go ahead.
Well, I have a little bit of a different tone to this board. I have been coming to school board meetings for over three years now and I just want to say how thankful I am for this board because I have had things happen to me by board members. I've had a board member who's no longer here, who screams across a boardroom where my children go to school. I've had lots of things happen. And I don't go on national TV and talk about it. I want to say thank you to this board for bringing up the dress code because, like you guys said, there's lots of things on that dress code policy that just don't make sense for our kids. As far as the furries, I appreciate you guys bringing that up because it's not just kids wearing. Because it's not just kids wearing cute cat ears on their headbands. It's a boy, a high school boy, walking a girl on a leash. That happened at our high school. That's not okay. That's not safety. That's not creating a safe environment for our children. I wonder if that mom knows that a boy had a collar and a leash around her daughter? Probably not. So I appreciate you guys having these conversations. Because all of these things that seem unimportant, they are important. It goes for the culture of our schools. It speaks to creating a safe learning environment for our kids. And I just want to say I really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. That concludes public comments. We thank you for your willingness to address this in this public manner. Do you guys want to take a break or are you ready to keep going? Good? Give you an opportunity, we good to go? Paul, you need a restroom break?
No, I'm good.
No, we're good, okay. That concludes the public comments. We're now on to the consent agenda, Ms. Hand.
Yes, sir, there are 26 items under this category.
Mrs., I was supposed to, which one of these is, does, Ms. Jenkins, you have to pull one of them, right? Is that this one? You already got it?
Yes, that's where it is, at the bottom.
Okay. All right. There are 26 agendas on this candidate. Thank you, Ms. Hand. Does any board member wish to pull any of these items? No items being pulled. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of those pulled for discussion. Move to approve. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. We will now hold a public hearings to address, let me make sure I do this, to address item G35, Board Policy 3210, Standards of Ethical Conduct. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion? Figure that one out. Figure that one out, Paul. Is there any discussion? Nope. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next up is a public hearing to address item G36, Board Policy 5500, Student Discipline. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Student condis- Says discipline. It's written in here differently. Is there anyone wishes to address this item? Move to approve. Any, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. Next in the public hearing is to address item G37, Board Policy 5600, Student Discipline. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Move to approve. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Next is public opinion to address item G38, Public Policy 5610, Removal Out-of-School Suspension, Disciplinary Placement, and Expulsion of Students. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion? Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Next is a public hearing to address item G39, Public Policy 8420.02, Federal Facial Covering During a Pandemic Epidemic Events. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion? Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0, Paul. Ms. Hand, would you please let us know about the item under the action portion of today's agenda?
Yes, sir, the first item is H40, Superintendent's Employment Agreement.
Do I hear a motion? It's okay. Second. Is there any discussion? You guys want to talk about it or no?
No, I'm very excited for our new superintendent.
We good? Mr. Paul? You want to talk about some of the highlights that the negotiations had?
Yep, for the most part, it was similar to Dr. Mullins's contract. The salary came in at 250 and the board had allocated between 225 and 3. He wanted to allocate the funds for cabinet when he fills cabinet positions. He also is taking the district's car over $700 monthly stipend for that, which would save the board $8,400 otherwise. It's the same contract that Dr. Mullins had. And Dr. Mullins did get the car as well, so.
I will say that I was, we negotiated within 48 hours. We had a deal and everything that he was saying was to consciously be able to give opportunities to people and he was excited to get moving. And if you talk about some of his first moves, being fiscally responsible, I loved it. So with that, I don't think anybody else wants to say anything, but.
Well, other than say, "I can't wait," you know, to, not that I can't wait to not have you here.
No, she's just as excited, Jane.
But we've talked about it. You're not willing to stick around up here, even with the two of you. No, it's not. But hopefully, it shows a little bit there in the negotiations, how quick, what he chose to take. Because, you know, he's a team player. That's the first thing he said to me in the one-on-ones. He expressed that and it made sense and I believe him. And when I wasn't there negotiating the contract, you know, sure, in the back of your mind, you're like, it's hard to turn that away. And he did. He said, "No, we need as much money as we can have for our cabinet, for our staff, and this is plenty for me." So that's a man of integrity and I look forward to working with him.
Yeah. And just so everybody knows, he comes back on the 30th before the official entrance. We'll have a whole thing then and we can talk more about it. But this is just to agree to the contract. We had to hurry. We didn't want him to run away. Are we all good?
Yeah.
Anybody? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. The next item. Congratulations, Mr. Rendell. Next item is H41, Procurement Solicitations. Do I hear a motion? Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify.
My computer is literally.
Would you like me to give you my computer? Look, you can come over to my computer. Hang on a second. No, 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 she can come over here. Look, you want something?
Do you want mine?
Is that what the problem is? Well, no, that's just what fixes it. Oh, that one's like really happy. No, it's okay. I think I can still pull it over, hold on. So one of, one of the items that was on the agenda, I think, Ms. Campbell, I had seen that you had asked some questions about it and I had some questions about it as well, was in regards to that DRE tutoring that is showing up on here. And Dr. Sullivan, I don't know if you can come talk to us about it just for a minute because I want to just clarify a couple of things that I have questions on. Which I think I sent an email and I don't know if you got it or not, from Agenda Plus, because my Agenda Plus doesn't like me.
Just so you know, well, Dr. Sullivan's coming up, Board Docs. Tammy's working on getting us access to all the other school districts' policies. So she's working on that. Ms. Sullivan.
Sure, how can I help?
Yeah, I just, my question was, I guess, in regards to, obviously, this is a significant contract. What happens if they, if we don't, 35,000 students don't use this service? What happens? Is it based on like per user, then we're charged as much? Or how does it work?
At this point, the contract is for the accessibility for the 35,000 students. We will be monitoring the usage closely and aligned with our other procurement contracts for software. We have a standard out for those contracts. So this is the first time we've ever contracted with an external source for student access. So yeah, it's new to us as well. We went through a very lengthy procurement process and we do have the standard ability to cancel at a certain time.
And if we cancel, it's prorated? Is that how that will work?
Yes, I anticipate. I don't want to say 100%. I don't have it in front of me, I apologize.
Okay. And do you have any information as far as how many students took advantage of tutoring, even whether it be in-person or online for us last school year? Or just any kind of history for that?
Yeah, so our in-person tutoring was primarily after school or before school and in some cases zoomed by our teachers. Our schools have exhausted their teachers' ability to fill in the gaps for all of the tutoring that's desired out there. And so if I get the numbers correctly, anywhere more than 10,000 students have taken some opportunity of tutoring onsite through our ESER dollars. However, many of those dollars are unspent at this point and we'll be looking at modifications for next year. Our teaching staff is just exhausted. They've been doing a lot of extra duty in the summer and in the weekends. And so the schools will still have that funding. We're not decreasing school funding at all for tutoring. But in the last two years, they have not exhausted all those funds. So it is my priority, of course, to give our teachers an opportunity to make extra money and while supporting their students through academic achievement, they have not fully taken advantage of all those resources. So this was a unique ESER sub-grant. It was kind of hard to explain. Our regular tutoring dollars is in our main ESER grant. This was a small sub-grant that was specifically targeted at, I think I mentioned, those three areas, after-school programs, summer enrichment, and individualized tutoring. And so we had received lots of inquiries from vendors throughout this entire period that are delivering individualized tutoring service. So we went to RFA and wrote it into the grant. Obviously, if the board chooses otherwise, we could certainly write an amendment to the grant and choose it otherwise. But this was a very specific targeted grant where that was one of the desired outcomes. Our elementary friends have done contracted services for tutoring and they have struggled to have the people come onsite to do that tutoring. So this is a little different. It would be an opportunity for our students to access help 24/7. And that's not anything we've done before. We think it's a neat opportunity, particularly with grant funds. Certainly would not support that if it wasn't a specific grant opportunity for our kids.
Okay. When it says on here, I'm reading what you wrote, as far as the purpose of the program is to implement summer enrichment camps that target public school students, academic and extracurricular needs, and school programs and individualized tutoring services. So when it talks about extracurricular needs, I'm just thinking outside of the box here because it's a lot of money, it is. And so when you look at it and then historically, how many students have taken advantage of tutoring?
Yep.
And then how many we have in here? And I just have a concern, is this going to be the best, the highest and best use for this funds? Is there another way that you could spend that money for extracurricular needs or summer enrichment that would possibly provide a service to a student that we couldn't or we didn't have otherwise?
Probably not to scale. So right now, we are supporting every single request for summer enrichment opportunities and we're still coming under budget. We are providing supplies, we're paying for teachers, we're paying for assistants, we're paying for busing, we're paying for food services, and we're paying for security. And it is well within our budget and in all likelihood, it's going to come under budget. In terms of our after-school programs, we've, there's a sister grant. So this is an ESER sub-grant for these programs out of ESER. There's a sister grant out of CHRISA, which is the second federal grant that supported COVID recovery. That sister grant is paying for this summer and current after-school programs and activities. This grant is paying for next summer. And so we could certainly revisit it at the board's discretion. We have no personal feelings. We are really just trying to maximize direct support to students and families. Our general mindset with ESER Resources have been to, obviously, support student recovery, minimize burdens on families, minimize burdens on teachers. Those have really been our three big buckets and, of course, protect the district's financial well-being. And so we're constantly look at how we can alleviate something off a parent's plate, supporting a student and supporting teachers. And right now, teachers cannot fill this need. We had several schools this year subcontract out some tutoring services to assist with things like SAT prep and things like that. So just constantly looking at how we can meet those buckets with these short, one-time funds to accelerate outcomes.
And because I don't know the stipulation of the grant, when it's talking about extracurricular needs, would that be something that you could use this grant money for to buy possibly equipment or things that would benefit a school and it would stay there beyond just the one year?
Yeah, we've done a lot of that. So in its sister grant already, we have supported ROTC programs. So one of the things that we looked at first was the things that we did not support in ARP. And so we looked at the after-school programs that do a lot for kids and was not in our main ARP grant. So in the sister one, the one I just mentioned, we addressed ROTC. We've addressed theater programs, art programs. We put a lot of funds into the elementary after-school programs from additional resources and things like that. So yes, we've looked at different after-school programs that we primarily focused on the ones that were unfunded in ARP, that we could help those programs.
Okay. And I'm just asking questions about this again because it is such a significant amount of money.
For sure. No, no, I don't mind at all, of course.
And I mean, obviously, going to some of the schools, I see some major needs that are in different arenas where I'm like, I think this could possibly cross over and it would be beneficial and it would last beyond just the year. So this 35,000 students that potentially may not take advantage of the tutoring, I would hate for those funds to be wasted.
I feel the pain every single decision that we make.
I know.
Yeah, we've done a lot of equipment purchases because of that exact mindset. We try to infuse funds where schools have an opportunity to buy everything from instruments to speakers to things for their stages and lighting. We've done a lot of that and there's absolutely, we could revisit it if the board decides.
To some of my schools, I mean, I have schools that have uniforms, I mean, for sports.
We can't buy uniforms.
Can't buy uniforms, okay, all right. So what, that's where I'm like, what exactly could we use this for if it wasn't used for this?
So can I jump in for a second? Just because I hear you about the amount of money, but this is why we are here. Academics is why we're here.
Yeah.
And COVID, as we've talked about, the struggles over the last few years, starting with three years ago with 2020. The academic drop and the challenges we've had. That is what, that is our number one priority. It's what the funds were given to us by the federal government, by the state government when they released it. They all along the way have wanted to say, "What are you going to do to catch kids up? What are you going to do to catch kids up?" And so this amount of money, considering that we have already given to many of the things that you've mentioned, either in this part of the grant or in other parts of the grant, I would strongly encourage you to go take a look at the website, which is extensive, that tells all that they've been spending every single one of those ESER grants on. But this is vital. And when I go, when I've gone into my schools over the last few years that we've had this funding and talked to the principals about the tutoring opportunities, they have, I have heard this repeatedly. They can't get their people to, even for pay, we're paying, to stay after school, to get the numbers up. The school where my son goes has had, whenever they've had tutoring over the last couple of years, they'll have a whole slew of times you can go in for math tutoring and then one time a week for English Language Arts tutoring. And so it's really been a struggle to find them. And I'll be quite honest with our secondary students, especially when I think about the opportunities for tutoring, so many of them can't come in early, they can't stay late when they've got to ride the bus and they can't, you know, middle schoolers don't have a way, they're not driving themselves, right? So that's, so they're, when the only opportunity is, and even when the virtual ones, you've got to be home because the virtual opportunity is 4:30 to 5:30. Well, unless they live next door, there's no way they're going to be home in time. So this opportunity to access tutoring, one-on-one, individualized tutoring at any time of the day, they can do it before school, they can do it after school, they can do it in the evenings, late at night. And I, you know, you said 24/7. So if they get up at 3 o'clock in the morning, but they've got to have this kind of personal one-on-one access with a tutor, this, this could be, this could be, you talk about things that last. A kid catching up academically, that's going to last. And to me, it's absolutely worth it. So what I would say is it's going to be incumbent upon us as a district to make sure that we're communicating this opportunity. And I know that the schools will be targeting those students who have the most to catch up and say, "Look, we have this resource, we're paying for this resource. Get out there and use it and take advantage of this." But this is priority one for us, is academic achievement. And I am so grateful for the money we put into music, into sports, into arts, and all of those things and the many, many opportunities our kids have had over the last two summers. And, you know, it'll be, it's really going to stink when we, some of those end after next year, where we don't have the money to do all these amazing summer programs for enrichment. But this is the most important thing that we. But this is the most important thing that we do, is get kids across the finish line academically. And we are continuing to see the ripple effects of those three months out of school in 2020, and then all the disruptions of the COVID e-learning year. And we've got to get kids caught back up so that we can, from all levels, this is super important. And to me, putting this amount of money into to our number one priority as a district is, this is what we should be doing with it.
So thank you for that.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that academics being the top priority. My concern is thirty-five thousand users, and historically, is that what we're doing? We're not? And so I'm like, wait a minute, if there's twenty-five thousand users that we're going to pay for that we're not going to use?
Totally understand. You know, one
That's a waste, right?
One of the things I can mention is this, this company came in less than half of most of the other petitioners. I think petitioners, the wrong choice of words, but whatever that choice of words is. And so I do want to mention that leaves a significant chunk that can be amended in the grant. So we, you know, the RFA process is a long one. And so it 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 delayed, obviously, contracting because we wanted to do it really well, we brought in principals, we brought in different staff members, and the procurement team, as you know, does not mess around with a quality process. So we're starting later than we had hoped, which means we are going to be significantly under budget. And so if the board wants to ponder that, so we budgeted 1.4 million dollars, originally believing we could run the programming for two years. Instead, we're looking at a contract just just over half of that. So we're looking at about 600,000 that is not currently obligated, if you will, in the areas of extra, well, it's currently obligated because it's in this spot. But we could amend a plan to continue to target the areas of summer enrichment and after-school programming. We really don't need additional funds in summer enrichment. This is our second year doing it out. We've got, we've got a pretty good pattern of budgeting. And like I said, even if we maintain this level of this year, which was huge and awesome, I might add, next summer can maintain at the same level without additional funds. So it would leave about 600,000 if if the board does want to support the contract and then make recommendations on other after-school things that we could amend the grant to support, pending DOE approval, because they don't always approve what seems like it fits perfectly. And so I always want to throw in that asterisk to pending DOE approval. And so there there's room to amend, even with this, the approval of this tutoring.
And if the board approves this tonight, what's the timeline on when you expect that this would be implemented or available to students?
Oh, very quickly. So we anticipate working with the vendor immediately. And I I don't want to overpromise timeline, but very quickly. We would hope to get into place for students who would like to access it sooner than later. A lot of our students, as you know, do dual enrollment and other programming in the summer. So we'd work very closely with our vendor.
And you are saying we can, and I'm sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions about this because it is a huge contract, and so that's why I'm, I just, um, you know, I feel like I'm asking more questions than anybody else, and I apologize for that. But I'm just thinking, is this the highest and best use for it? And and the concern with the fact that are all the students going to actually utilize this, and what does that look like if they don't?
Yeah, I would say no, that all the students won't utilize it.
Right.
I would say that it is important to budget for all students to be able to utilize it. And that's the tricky part. As you guys are aware, many, many, many of our contracts are based on per-student enrollment. So whether it is our math textbooks and the online access, we're paying for online student enrollment by student.
Right.
And that is a a pretty standard practice. Again, I, we are, we work to fulfill the intent of the grant and the needs that we saw and things that were unfilled and what schools were asking us for, but we certainly understand if the board would like us to go in another direction.
Okay. I think you've answered all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries, of course.
Ms. Wright, I just want to say, please don't ever feel like asking questions. That is the ultimate duty that we have up here, is to ask those tough questions. And I know Dr. Sullivan, I just had one question for you.
Sure, sure, sure.
No, but I wanted to say, don't, don't ever feel like you have to say that, because that is ultimately what we do.
Hundred percent.
And I know that Dr. Sullivan appreciates that.
Yep.
Let me ask you something, because I might be able to figure this out.
Okay.
If, I think we have a thirty-five thousand licenses, but if they don't start the license, meaning we don't have somebody engage in it, what is the trigger to start the program? So, meaning this is a, you know what I mean? This is a tutoring program, that we have thirty-five thousand of them. Does it mean that if only ten thousand do, we might be able to wait until they actually engage to be, to start those? Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Do you follow me? Do they like, I'll start now?
It does. Our procurement people are the experts. I would prefer, if the board has those questions, I would suggest we look a little more granular in that and bring it to the next agenda. I don't, I mean, like I said, this isn't, you know, this isn't something that I mind waiting till the next board meeting, because those are really good questions, they're legitimate questions and very appropriate, and I'd be happy to consult with the procurement team and bring back some more detailed answers.
For me, it's not about that.
Okay.
It's just I was hoping that there would be an opportunity for us to minimize. I understand Ms. Wright's concern.
Sure.
I also understand the concern that if we have a series of schools, that we only have X, and we're being able to implement, and we don't have the extra ones that we're all of a sudden telling those kids, no, I get it. I just wanted to try to ask because that might give us the longer run into next year. That's all.
Yeah, I I really would feel more comfortable in moving this to the next board meeting so we can address all of those details, unless you want to get in the kids' hands before the end of this school year. Obviously, that would predicated. And so I'm comfortable with either decision with the board. I appreciate the questions and details. I I don't have any problem with that at all. So just in terms of the contract development, I would not be the expert on that and would want to consult with the experts before I speak to something and put my foot in my mouth.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Can I, can I have a?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jenkins.
Dr. Sullivan, I I respect that and I appreciate that. However, I I trust your professionalism and the procurement team to have asked those questions. It's okay that you didn't, you aren't able to answer them for us. Mr. Susan, I love your suggestion to look into, but I agree, I don't think that's a make or break, but I think it's a great solution to the problem if it's possible. And quite frankly, if it's not, then we do what we can to ensure that we have all those licenses going now to our students, which I know we're going to do. I mean, we're not going to just throw it out there and just give parents a link and hope it gets used. So hopefully, we'll be tracking it and robustly recruiting parents and students to use that program. But this is so critical, and I think once parents find out about it, I don't think we're going to have a very difficult time. I think parents are going to be really excited that their kids are going to be able to access this at home, especially over summertime. It's it's really difficult. We have opportunities for our students this summer for free for enrichment programs, but that's not always easy for working parents. So I don't think we're going to have difficulty.
Thank you. So there are, are there any other discussions on any of the other procurement solicitations? No? All right. Ms. Wright, we're going to, if you have a want to try to pull it, you know what I mean? You have to do that now? Or we're just part of discussion on all of them? But if you wanted to try to make a vote to pull it and all that stuff, you can, or we can just vote on all of them now?
I would feel more, oh, sorry, ma'am. I would feel more comfortable, honestly, and after, after Dr. Sullivan saying that she would prefer to pull it to be able to answer these questions, I just think it's smart for us to look at all of this because there's a real good opportunity that we could maybe, we're going to be missing. So the yes to this might mean a no to something else that could be extremely beneficial to our students. And so I I hear what you're saying, I hear what everybody's saying on the board, and I'm not saying I don't want to provide tutoring or make this an available option, but I'm just saying I want to look at all of it, all of it as a whole and find out, hey, if we don't use all the licenses, what can we do? Or is there something different that we could possibly do in conjunction with this? Because honestly, it would be more beneficial to pay a higher rate for the students that are actually going to use this tutoring service versus signing up for thirty-five thousand licenses and find out only ten thousand are using it. I get that we're getting a price break because of the quantity. I understand that. But the quantity, if the quantity price break is, you get what I'm saying, where it could make more sense to pay the higher rate for the lesser licenses. I wish they would allow us to do it on a per-user kind of basis. It doesn't sound like this particular vendor will. I would prefer to pull it and and look into this a little bit further, Dr. Sullivan, and maybe work with you on this and and bring it back.
Do, let me, just, if, okay, if you wouldn't like to say, I was just going to ask the process of that to Paul, I think, that how, when the next board meeting and all that other stuff was, but Ms. Campbell, you had something to say?
Yeah, I, I hear you, I hear your concern. I, what I'm hearing from Dr. Sullivan, I don't want to put words in her mouth, is if it, if there's a chance that we're just going to say no, she'd rather sway and get all the questions answered. But I, I, two things we need to think about is, one, if we're not going to do this, how are we going to provide that tutoring? Because we are also going to continue to have in-person tutoring with our teachers, the ones that we can get. We're going to, that is already funded, and we're still going to continue to do that. But it's not filling all the gaps. So if we're not going to do it this way, how? And we already know that they've looked at all the online, you know, if you look at the, all the vendors, fourteen, they narrowed it down, this, this was the best one, which means, you know, not only the services they provide, but the cost, the lowest cost. So how are we going to provide this specific need of tutoring for our students if we're not going to do it this way? This is really important. And then the other thing is, if we do delay, my concern is that then we, you know, students are out of the building, yeah, we can try to reach out by email, whatever, but we don't have that. You know, this is written so that if we approve it, the contract starts tomorrow. Doesn't mean that all the signups are there and it'll be on Launchpad, but we can have access really quickly. And if we don't pass this tonight, then we're not going to have it in place before the end of the school year. So we can really get that communication out to our students and to our families of the students who are going to need it. And I really like that they have the opportunity to utilize it over the summer, if they will. You know, the the heavy usage will be during the school year, right? But we're going to know those fast scores very shortly. And some schools have already, I was just at a school yesterday, and they already had their geometry EOC scores back. I mean, some of these, you know, families are already going to know, really, in the coming days, that their student needs this assistance. And so we could go ahead and get families and kids plugged in to get in the help that they need to get where they need to, where it to be. That's, and that's my concern with with the delay. Because, you know, obviously, if it's been through the procurement process, a lot of these questions have been answered for the people who are going to be utilizing it.
Thank you for that, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Gibbs, when is the next board meeting that this would be available to put on an agenda for action? Would that be the May 30th?
Yes.
Okay. And if, and what is the last day of school? I think it's May 27th?
Twenty-sixth, for students.
Twenty-sixth. We would miss the opportunity to to engage with the students before they left. Okay. Is there any other questions? Anybody wish to discuss it? Okay. Ms. Wright, if you want to try to pull that, you have to, you know what I mean?
I'm going to try to pull it. I don't, if the board's will is to move forward with it, that's okay. I'm just saying for for the sake of really fully investigating this. And then my other concern too is some of the students that are going to need this tutoring, are they going to have the technology that they need to be able to utilize this? Because a lot of our families don't have laptops, or they don't have tablets. So is this grant, could this grant possibly work in conjunction with that? Could we provide laptops or some kind of technology to these students so that they have access to it? Because I think this is a bigger issue than just, hey, here's thirty-five thousand users. That's great, but if you don't have a internet or you don't have a laptop, how are you going to use it? So I think maybe we could do both. And so for me, that's the only reason I'm asking to pull it, but if the board doesn't wish to do so, or they want to move forward on it, I understand that as well.
Okay. I think then what you want to try to do is, what's the item number that you needed to pull?
Well, it's under procurements, it's not
H forty-one, D.
H forty-one, what was it?
D.
D? So I would make a motion to
Make a motion to pull H forty-one, item number D, until next board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second. Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor of pulling it signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Gets pulled, we go back to the original procurement solicitations. H forty-one, we have the rest of them. Any other discussion on any of the other items? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. All right. H forty-one passes. H forty-two, reappointment nomination of the annual contract teacher for 2023-2024 school year. I want to provide Ms. Jenkins an opportunity to speak to this item. Ms. Jenkins?
Yep. I must abstain from this vote due to a conflict of interest as my husband, David Jenkins, is being reappointed as a teacher for the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins, for having a educator inside your household. We appreciate that. Many of us had to make that same call. Do I hear a motion?
I have to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All right. It passes five-zero. We will move on to the I I said five, I I always, I always approve if I say no. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken at these items today. There's three items under this category. Does any member wish to discuss any of these items?
Yes.
Okay. Which one do you want to discuss?
The school board member, districting, residents area.
All right.
So I have thought a lot about this, and you guys have been able to hear me in the workshops. This is our first chance for it to be out on our regular board meeting. And, you know, as I've been thinking through, you know, I recognize that this is not a decision that is about what's best for kids. It's not a kid-type decision. And so I don't want to spend a whole lot of energy about and continue controversy about this, but I am going to, so I, but I'm going to finish out tonight with my concerns. Because, you know, how we draw our boundaries that we are elected from doesn't affect in a direct way at all our student performance. And so then, and I want to keep our focus on the, our main thing, the main thing, which is educating kids. But I will tell you, I I have, like many of the decisions that we have made over the last six months, sometimes my bigger issue is with how the decision was made and not the actual decision. And the truth is, there's no right or wrong way to draw our lines. But I do have some issues going back to the things that were said. And my biggest concern, board, is that I feel personally, and when I, you know, I'm one voice of five, when I brought up some concerns that I thought were big concerns, they were kind of made out like they weren't big concerns. And there was other, there were other people who brought up things that they thought were big concerns, and it turns out that those weren't concerns. And so I, without, I know that sounds very vague. But, you know, one of the things that was brought up was about gerrymandering. And, you know, there's, gerrymandering can mean several things. You know, specifically, the worst kind of gerrymandering is when you're drawing lines, and it was mentioned tonight, but I don't think this is the way ours is right now, that the lines are drawn to exclude certain groups of people from voting based on, you know, race or political parties or whatever. When I look at the way the lines are drawn, it's particularly up in the one little area, in the Rockledge area. You know, having gone back through the minutes of the former redistricting processes in processes in two thousand eleven and two thousand one, the school board intentionally drew the lines that they did to, to keep an even number of schools. This board has decided we're not going to do that. We're going to do it a different way, and, you know, that is what it is. But we will have our, we, in order to avoid that kind of gerrymandering concern, we actually are creating kind of a difference, and I'm not doing this in the discriminatory gerrymandering, but just in the shape, to create districts that actually will be bending and curving more in order to match the county commissioners. And I will say again, the county commissioner's lines are drawn differently for, for purpose, for a reason, a very reasonable purpose. It'll give every county commission a beach, touching the beach and touching the river. You know, we've talked about that we wanted it to be less confusing for voters. And so, if we draw the lines to match the way the board is, you know, the majority of the board is moving to match the county commission lines, then it'll be less confusing, because then everybody will be in the same county commission and the same school board, you know, district, everything will be the same. So, if you're in five, you're in five. If you're in three, you're three, two, two, et cetera. But at the same time, we've created more confusion, because even if we can do our, our schools that we represent differently from the areas that we're elected from, you guys know that when someone has a concern, unless they're going to email the whole board, they usually, if they're only going to email one, they're going to email the board member that is over the school. If they're a problem with the school, they're going to email the board member that's over their school. And they're going, we're going to create some confusion out of that. We just are. It's going to be confusing, and maybe people get over it, and they'll, they'll get past it. But, you know, the other thing that was really bothering me, and I've tried not to make it personal, because I don't, I don't want it to be about me personally, but about the process. And I've already brought up the fact that we do, you know, we have the forty-two thousand voters. That has been my biggest current concern all along, is that the forty-two thousand voters. And that was addressed, but the way it was addressed, it just didn't really sit well with me, because whether forty-two thousand voters actually will vote, or whether it's only half of them or a third of them, it's still nine percent. We're making the change for nine percent of the voters who were supposed to vote in twenty-twenty-four, and now they're, they're being moved to District Five or Two, which means they'll have to wait two more years. So, have to be six, six years between elections. And that, that continues to bother me. It does still continue to bother me for me to be sitting outside of my district for the majority of my term, even though I will represent whatever I need to do. But the personal side of it for me, it was brought up at the last meeting, was that, Mr. Susan, you said, you know, but what I think what I've heard you say is that you and Ms. Jenkins aren't going to run again, so that's a moot point. I had to go back and listen to the previous workshops because, to see, did I actually say that? And I will tell you that I have not actually publicly said that. I may have joked about it, about the stress of the job. I may have said I haven't made that decision yet, because I don't, I didn't, the last time, make it until, like, ten months before. But the truth is, the majority of this board just made that decision for me. So, even with the term limits being put in place, that started in November, so this board, the majority, just determined for me and for Ms. Jenkins whether or not we can run again next time. And, you know, like I said, I've tried not to make it personal, but that does bother me. Now, the truth is, I know that my fate is not in the hands of three members of this school board. My future is in the hands of my God, and He will direct me in whatever endeavors I face in the future. So, I know that if this decision is part of that, I accept that. But I couldn't let this decision go forward further without stressing those objections. I also, as, because I did go back and watch those earlier meetings to see what exactly did I say, I also heard what the rest of us said. And when we had the opportunity to talk about the consultant coming in, there were board members who said one thing, and then we came the last time, and they said something different. And so, that's why I, when we, when we go through these processes, I just urge you, board, to be clear, to be transparent, to, you know, because I still have not figured out exactly why. Why? Why we have to do that? Why the driving force? I, when it gets down to it, we, we're saving fifty-two thousand dollars. We are saving fifty-two thousand dollars, and I know every dollar counts, and I don't question that. But in March, when Ms. Hand presented it, the thing was, we hate to spend the money, but we think we really need to do it to make it, to make sure we're handling this process, because it's a complicated process. So, when it gets down to it, we're saving fifty-two thousand dollars, and three people want to do it that way. And we can make those votes based on what we want to do, but it continues to bother me. It continues to bother me that we're making those decisions for such a high percentage of voters, when we could have just made a change. And, and listen, this is not a three-two decision. This is three board members wanted to line with the county commissioners, one wanted to keep it as close as possible as what we have and just make as few changes as possible, and one, I believe, and I don't want to speak for you, Ms. Jenkins, want, you know, wanted us to make significant changes to try to get closer to even, because we could get even closer than what the county commissioners did by having, because they're still sitting at eight-point-something percent difference. So, I, this, when we get here in March thirtieth, you know, I don't expect the public to rise up. I've actually, I asked my dental hygienist last week, what do you think about it? And she was like, well, I'm just excited you're going to get to be my school board member, so yay! So, I, I don't think the public's necessarily going to rise up, but like I said, I have a problem with the process, and I want us to follow a better process in how we make these decisions. Like I said, I'm not going to continue to, to, to push anything, because like I said, this is a big people decision, it's not about little people, and I want to keep the main thing, the main thing.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Anybody else?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
I actually disagree slightly. I do think it is a little bit about the little people. Because when you talk about the process, and the process isn't necessarily being done with full transparency and integrity, then we are impacting the little people. And like you said, we talked about this in the workshop, but this is the first time to talk about it at a board meeting, so do not talk about it when it comes up again. Going to talk about it now, too, since you decided to talk about it right now, just so we can move forward. I think, I think I know the why. I don't think anyone's saying it out loud. I think the why is pretty clear. I think I made that pretty clear in the workshop, that someone was being completely disingenuous even when they were speaking to the supervisor of elections by saying only one board member would be moved. It's, it's strange to me, since I've said from the day I was elected that I wouldn't be running for school board District Three for a second term. And I, I could technically run again, because my term lines up with District Four, so I hear you, Ms. Campbell, but technically, I can run again. But for me, this isn't a selfish decision, because again, I've said multiple times, I am not rerunning for school, but, school board District Three. Said that from the day I was elected. So, the whole point of this is foolish, and the disproportionate representation of schools, again, where are our priorities? We allow the county commission to draw their map the way they wanted to, and we are relinquishing our own authority to them by just simply accepting their map. The comments that this is going to be easier for the supervisor of elections was said multiple times, and I've refuted it every single time. Out of the supervisor of elections' mouth said, sure, it might reduce the number of precincts, but I actually can't even tell you how much it actually would do that. They're used to this process, they've done it from day one. I'm not comfortable relinquishing our authority to the decision made by a county commission. It doesn't make any sense. I believe that it should be as reflective as possible to have evenly-based schools, so that you can have an easier representation, a little bit more of a relationship. It's already difficult to have a relationship with our schools as it is, because we have so many schools. The fact that school board District Three is going to have twenty-one schools, with seven of them being secondary, is absurd. And then, there's going to be twelve in District Three? It doesn't make any sense. And the populations and the demographics of each district are no longer going to be representative of one another. You'll have a district that has a majority of retirees and less students than the other four districts. So, the decisions that you're making and the representation that you're doing is going to be very different than the other board members. Again, I think this board has made it very clear where they stand on this, and so, I'm taking this opportunity to say it now, because like Ms. Campbell, I don't want to have the conversation again, because it goes on the next board meeting, and just wanted to take the opportunity to put that on record at a board meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anybody else want to speak to it?
Yeah, I'll speak to it, too. So, Ms. Campbell, I appreciate what you're saying, and I've honestly thought about this every which way I have, because I thought, okay, what if this was my district? Because I know, again, we're saying, we're not, you're not trying to make it about yourself, but I get that, that situation and the, and, and feeling like we're deciding it for you, and that's not the overall intention. I want to speak to Bernard for a second, and I, because he asked this question, he didn't understand why we were doing it. It's because we have to. State statute says we have to have a certain percentage. We can't be over, I don't know if you can cite it for him, Paul, just to explain why we are going through this process?
It's federal, and so, one person, one vote. So, we're, districts are supposed to be as evenly, you know, populated as possible, so that every voter gets the same weight in their vote as every other voter.
Okay. And, and so, if we're not in line with that, we expose ourselves to liability, so we have to do it. This is obviously something that nobody on this board has gone through. I don't think any, you weren't sitting here when the last redistricting was done, so it is different. But every time I think about this, I go, you know what? Even if it was my seat, and I wouldn't be able to run again, I still would say it makes sense to line them up. And I would argue, Ms. Jenkins, that the fact that we're having this conversation and making this decision says that we are deciding. It doesn't, we're not relinquishing our right to decide, we're actually deciding how we're going to line up. Every person I've talked to in the community about this says, well, yeah, that makes the most sense. Why would it be different? I didn't even know it was different. Most people don't even understand that it's different. So, you know, again, that's where I just go, it makes the most sense to me, and I, I understand why it's controversial, I do, for, for certain people that are on the board, and I, I'm really, really sorry. It's not intentional towards any specific person. It is literally, because every time I look at this, and every time I think about this, and every time I pray about this, I come back to what makes the most sense. This makes the most sense to me. So, that's where I'm at with it.
All right. Anybody else?
When this situation was brought to my attention, I was in the middle of my campaign, and so, as far as being transparent, I've, I've been saying from the very beginning, I didn't need a consulting group, because we were out there knocking doors and talking to residents. In addition to that, I've said from the very beginning that I, if, if the county commission's already done this, paid for this, that, to me, it made sense. And so, I mean, nothing, nothing political here, savings of over fifty thousand dollars, it just made sense to, to go ahead and go with the county commission redistricting. So, I, I haven't changed my mind, it hasn't gone really any which way how you guys have felt. It, it isn't personal, it isn't about the, the number of schools that we're going to have. We'll, we'll look at that later. Yes, I'll be the one with twenty-one schools. It's only two more than I have now. I've been looking at the population, it does even it out. That's why the county commission did what they did. And again, that's just another, it's another common sense decision that it, it isn't personal in any way, has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, and I, and this, so that everybody's transparent, I brought this before the board in two thousand twenty-one, and the reason is, is that we were at a situation where this made sense to join in the conversation. That was part of the original conversation, was that we would join with the county commission to make these decisions together. And we decided to go the other route, because the board decided that because it was too short of a time to actually do it, even though the county was under the same respectful, you know, timelines and everything else, was able to get it in there, so we decided to move forward. That was before Ms. Campbell ran again, and that was before a lot of this stuff. So, there's no, there's no maniacal thing that's sitting here. The other thing is, is that if you look at our current districts, the way they are, there is definitely significant, whether you call it gerrymandering or, you know, district redrawing, it is significantly through Rockledge and through some of the other areas that we have, are significant. If you guys look at the way that they draw, the League of Women Voters and many of the other districts are supposed to follow not bizarre lines, and the county commission lines are much better than the ones that we have sitting today, and that's one of the reasons I also made the decision to make the recommendation in two thousand twenty-one. As far as schools, we proved last week that there are some, many schools that have the majority of our students in one of our districts. So, like, I have the majority of a school, I have like eighty percent of the school's